Good evening, members of the Board of Alderman. At this present time, Josh Schurt is not around to serve tonight as president. He is on vacation. So I would like to pick a temporary chair for this all, all important meeting of the Ansonia Board of Alderman. And at this time, I will open up the nominations for a board of all, a temporary Board of Alderman president.
I will nominate Tony Mamon.
I second it.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations for temporary chair of tonight's meeting? Are there any other nominations for the temporary chair for tonight's meeting? A third and final time, are there any other nominations for tonight's meeting? Having none, I'll close the nominations, all those in favor of Tony Mamon as acting president of the Ansonia Board of Alderman for tonight's meeting, signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposition? Congratulations, Tony. It's your meeting to run.
Thank you. Trish, can you just add me as an extension, please?
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the Board, residents of the city of Ansonia. Good evening. Welcome to the May 2025 Ansonia Board of Alderman meeting. We're going to start first with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we do have Tristan Holman from Prendergast School to lead us. Tristan, are you out there? Tristan, are you there?
Yes.
Awesome. All right, everybody, please stand for the pledge. Tristan's going to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation
One nation.
under God
Under God.
indivisible
Indivisible.
for liberty
Justice.
Excellent. Thank you, Tristan. Nice job.
Good job, Tristan.
Great job.
Thank you.
All right, Trish, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Alderman King.
Present.
Alderman Farrar.
Here.
Alderman Adamowski. Woman Tar.
Yeah.
Alderman Cassetti.
Present.
Alderman Janetti.
Here.
Alderman Knott.
Present.
Alderman Hardy.
Here.
Alderman Yaman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman Mamon.
Here.
President Schuer. Alderman Lovinsky. Alderman Duranty.
Here.
Eleven present.
I declare a quorum.
Three absent.
Okay.
Three absent.
Three absent. Got it.
No, that's, that's wrong.
That's wrong.
You only have two. So you, yeah.
Twelve are present.
So you have twelve and two.
One excused.
Sorry.
Twelve and two. I declare a quorum still. All right. Consideration of the previous minutes, we do have three sets of minutes. We have the April 2025 regular Board of Alderman meeting.
Motion approved. I make a motion to accept them.
Take it.
Motion by Janetti, second by Rivers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or extensions? Motion carries. The second set, there was the April 21st public hearing on the budget.
My motion will prove that any necessary corrections.
Motion by Lovinsky.
Second.
Second by Bob Knott. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? One extension, Rivers. Motion carries. And the second set was from the five-five.
What happened?
Not sure. Heard an echo, but the five-five public hearing and then the Alderman budget meeting. Motion for the minutes.
Motion to accept with any corrections.
Motion by Tar.
Second.
Second by Lovinsky. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Extensions?
Staying, I wasn't here.
Staying, I wasn't there.
Uh, two extensions, Rivers and Yaman. Motion carries. All right, uh, we have the public session up next. And again, I, we're going to just keep the rules that, uh, you know, Josh usually does. Um, it's not a Q and A session. Uh, try to keep it to three minutes and if you could just state your name and address for the public record. So we will open the public session. Either wave, raise your hands.
Hi, uh, may I speak?
Sure, go ahead. Name and address.
My name is Tom Capasso, 128 Jewett Street.
Hey, Tom. Go ahead.
So I'm on the executive session, which I know I can't speak at. That's why I wanted to speak on this. Um, I own 128 Jewett Street and it has blight fines on it of, you know, I think they're up to like seventy-three thousand. I bought the property approximately two and a half, three years ago in the same condition with, um, the intent to fix it up, but some things happened in my life that I wasn't able to do so. And all these fines started occurring and then they stopped and then they were restarted up, you know, six months ago without me really knowing. And I think they're still going. But I met with the mayor and the town attorney about two weeks ago and I proposed, um, a solution. I have a buyer that wants to purchase my home. And if we could temporarily remove the liens so that I can make the sale to this person and this company that has the financial means of fixing the whole house up because the house needs a few hundred thousand dollars worth of work. Um, if we could temporarily remove the liens and if, um, my buyer, he does agree, if we can give him sixty days to complete the punch, uh, list of items that are being blighted, which is a new roof, new rear porch and one boarded up window, uh, small basement window and power wash the house, which I actually already did on April 5th. I had that professionally done. Um, so if we could remove the lien so that we can make the sale and the new buyer could purchase the home and then he can do all that work within sixty days. If, um, that work is done in sixty days, if the Board of Alderman would approve, uh, removing the liens entirely. Um, so I just kind of wanted to state my, um, you know, what, what we proposed. And I think that would be the best thing for obviously myself and the town because from what I'm told, the town really just wants to get houses like this back to their, you know, former glory, you know, fixed up and looking good. And, you know, not occurring blight liens. So I just kind of wanted to let everybody know. And if, if the Board of Alderman had any questions for me, um, I don't know if you guys are going to be voting on this tonight or talking about it. But I just wanted to, you know, share this with you guys and, uh, see if this is something that we can, um, wrap up.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks for that. I know it's on the, uh, the executive session for later. Um, don't know if you want to hang out, you want to join back in a, a bit, some of these, you know, obviously we've got a bunch of other topics to get through. If you want to come back, um, or just listen in. Usually when we come out of executive session, if there's a vote, you know, you would, uh, you would hear it at that point.
Okay, yeah, I could hang out. I'm also, I mean, would you guys be able to talk to me or you can't talk to me during executive session?
Um, usually we would go into executive session, talk, and you can be invited in if that's what the, uh, Board is looking for.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I'll, I'll hang around because I'd love to get this resolved. I mean, does anybody have any questions for me on, on what I just said? I mean, does this seem, uh, reasonable? This is what the town attorney kind of, um, you know, said, that they've done something like this in the past. And I just think this is the, uh, you know, the best, the best solution. I mean, I don't have the money for the fines and I don't have the money for the repairs of the house. So, I mean, I found a buyer.
Okay. Yeah, we, we could factor all that in, Tom. And like I said, it's not a question and answer now. But if we do have questions, we could either add you into executive session or again, just get those questions out to you. That's on good time.
Oh, sorry. I was muted. Sorry. Yeah. Thank, no, thank you very much for your time and I'll, I'll hang on. And, uh, if you guys have questions later, let me know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in public session? For any raised hands? Second call for public session. Would anybody like to speak? Don't see any hands waving. Don't see any digital hands. Third and final call for public session. Seeing there's none, I'd like to, I'll close public session.
Amy Bravo has her hand up.
Hold on, guys. I just saw Amy Bravo's hand. Amy, go ahead. Name and address, please.
Hi, Amy Bravo, 10 Clifford Drive. I apologize. I just logged in. Um, I'm not sure if anyone already spoke in public session. I just wanted to speak. Um, I saw on the agenda that, um, toward the end of the agenda is the discussion of, um, bids for the Nolan Field project. And I just wanted to say that I hope that the Board will consider the bid that they have on the table. Um, last week there was an incident with the high school baseball team that played a game that started at three forty-five in the afternoon, went thirteen innings, tied at three for about six innings long. And the umpires had to suspend the game in the thirteenth inning because of darkness. And there were many people questioning why we couldn't just flip on the lights. This Nolan Field project will level the playing field and take that Title IX argument out of the picture and allow not only boys and girls, baseball, softball, but also tennis and soccer, leveling the playing field, not only between boys and girls sports, but also between different sports in the same season and giving everyone the opportunity to have, um, fields and lighting for their play. Um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. All right. Third and final call. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Third and final call. All right. With that, I will close the public session. Thank you, everyone. All right. So Mayor, before I turn it over to you just a minute, there was a late agenda item ad that came in, um, from president of the Ansonia Soccer Club. I think we should discuss that. Um, can I get a motion to add that to the agenda under new business?
Motion.
Motion by Cassetti.
Second by Yaman.
Second by Yaman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. We'll add that as item number three under new business, which was sent to the full board. Tristan, um, Beth, I'll make sure you guys have a copy of that if you did not get that. All right, uh, public official session. Mayor Cassetti?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, uh, Mamon. Great job. Good evening, members of the Board of Alderman. Great residents of the city of Ansonia. I know Josh would prefer being here tonight instead of visiting the Emerald Isle, but we will keep his seat warm for him. The budget is up again for consideration. And while I certainly encourage cuts, I want to also encourage you to remember our most vulnerable residents, especially the children and the elderly, and to ensure that our public safety departments remain whole. While our mill rate is lower than most any other city in the state of Connecticut and certainly lower than any distressed municipality, the key to keeping taxes low isn't cuts, it's revenue, revenue, revenue. And that is what Ansonia Copper and Brass can generate for us. I want to be sure to thank Corporation Counsel John Marini for creating, create, creating the path to acquire this critical parcel. Sheila and staff for securing millions in revenue to clean up and incentivize this property and this board for allowing us to move this in the right direction and back to productive reuse. This is a parcel that will be an income generator, the likes of which we will not see again in our lifetime. An RFP is going to be going out this week for Ansonia Copper and Brass. And there is no better way to keep the mill rate as low as possible. The lease of this property and the income it will generate is the light at the end of the tunnel for Ansonia residents. We are on the cusp of having never to worry about budget cuts again. Thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, Corporation Counsel John Marini.
Right, Mr., uh, Temporary Chair and President. Uh, thank you, Alderman Mamon, for filling in. Of course, uh, President Schuer is, uh, out of the country on business, so he says, teaching classes in Ireland and Italy and other very scenic locations. So we wish him well. Obviously very difficult to teach in those conditions, as you would imagine. Um, we, we do have a full slate of legal matters on and, and also presentations on the fields. So I'm going to keep it short. Do want to give a big thanks to North Atlantic. Our new partners obviously came on board with a new trash contract. And in order to help, uh, meet the needs of the residents, worked with, uh, the mayor and his team, myself, to put forth a deal where residents can sign up for a free extra ninety-six gallon blue totter to accommodate their trash needs. Or, and, uh, the alternative to swap out the ninety-six gallon totter with a smaller sixty-four gallon totter for those that felt the, uh, the new one was a bit too large. That offer is open for a two-week period that started Saturday. Uh, and so we're going to urge all residents that are interested to sign up. That information right now is on the city's social media, on Facebook. But the mayor is going to do a robo-call in the very near future, at least one, if not several, uh, to make sure residents don't miss out on that opportunity. We'd asked Alderman to spread the word to your residents, your constituents. And of course, uh, we'd like to get that deal out there, the information out there, uh, through any means, including the press, to make sure residents don't miss out. Of course, we do have the issues, uh, tonight in executive session on a number of outstanding matters. Uh, I do want to thank, uh, our Field Turf, uh, who is basically our, our only response with respect to bidders to the, the final addendum that this board worked hard on about a month ago. Um, and so with that, I will, uh, take any questions on any matter.
My crowd tonight.
And of course, it goes without saying that we're in the middle of a budget process. Um, I do understand that the Board of Education, uh, is likely going to be meeting shortly to be taking a look at their budget. We've asked them to submit recommendations for any reduction of the Board of Ed budget to pass along to the Board of Alderman. And as you've heard, uh, the mayor opine, you know, we're looking to obviously protect our most vulnerable residents. Uh, Mayor's office is also looking to bring the, uh, the city budget to at least a zero percent increase in order to keep taxes as absolutely low as possible for our residents. And with that, to, uh, Sheila.
Thank you, John. Uh, Economic Development Director.
Sheila O'Malley. Thank you, uh, Acting President Mamon, members of the Board of Alderman. Um, sorry, my, uh, video I should have shortly. Um, but I was, I was, I am in the car. Um, just, uh, some updates for you. As the mayor said, the RFP for the Ansonia Copper and Brass parcel will be going out on Friday, um, which is a really big deal. Um, we've gotten some, uh, some interest from some exciting opportunities I would, I would imagine are going to be proposed, uh, for this site. Um, I've already got quite a few interested, uh, folks in this, developers in, interested in this parcel. So that's exciting news and, um, looking forward to that. Also on Friday, bids are due back for, um, remedial soil remediation for the SHW parcel. Um, the testing and the soil remediation is going to occur along with the demolition. So a lot of activity, equipment is on site, just waiting for a change, for the state to approve a change order on, um, uh, two total wreckings contract for that site. So they can get, get started on that. Um, Olson Drive, everyone's favorite topic. Um, before you ask me about it, I will tell you, we also are waiting on the state for a change order, which is fine, but that, that change order approval will allow, um, Enviro Consultants to lay the, lay the, um, soil down, comp, compact it for the parking areas and the turf field. And then John Gads will come in with his, um, his, uh, workers and start to put the turf in and to pave the, um, pave the, the parking lots and et cetera. And, um, and that is anticipated. It's anticipated that Enviro Consultants' work will be three weeks from the time we receive approval from the state. So you will see a lot happening, um, Acting President Mamon, in the next three to four weeks. Um, let's see, um, uh, work continues to, uh, to occur at the animal shelter and also at Gaddison Park with those projects that are going to be completed. Um, and State Street has gone through its third-party review, which is really a long and laborious process. Those comments have been received and responded to. And once the state, once it gets to the state and they approve, um, we are all set to go out to bid for the, uh, construction. Um, I know these, these projects are taking quite a bit of time, but, um, they will turn around very quickly once, once approved. And I think.
Slow and steady, Sheila. Slow and steady, right? Yeah, we can hear you.
She can?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, I'm probably missing something. Uh, we are, um, we are actively pursuing funding for sidewalks in the fourth ward um, and also for Franklin, um, because the state's reconstruction, well, not re, rehabilitation of that road. Um, the complete rehabilitation will occur in spring of twenty-six. But in the meantime, we're working on the sidewalks, trying to get funding for those. And also sidewalks for safe route, safe side, safe routes to school for our middle school in the Howard Avenue area as well.
Excellent.
That's all I have right now. And I know you guys are going to hear from, uh, Field Turf. They are on this, at this, in attendance.
Chicago, I was going to say, does Chicago or anybody else have any questions for Sheila?
Um, no, not, you know, Frank is pretty good now, so I pretty smooth going up.
Okay.
Everybody's getting a break. All right, we'll move on to Police Chief Wayne Williams. Chief?
Good evening, uh, Acting President Mamon, Board of Alderman, Mayor Cassetti. Uh, I'll try to keep it short tonight. Your agenda looks quite long. Um, just an update, we had a couple of officers graduate police academy, uh, from New Britain. So they just started their field training. We have another three officers still in the academy. We also have six open positions, uh, including one of the sergeant's, uh, positions is open. We also have a dispatcher opening, but we're getting closer to filling that one. Um, we are working on the replacement of our K-9 unit for the department. Uh, we went through a selection process. Officer Brandon Fowler was selected as the next K-9 officer. And we're working on our, with our vendor on selection of a new dog. Um, Lieutenant Barrera, Sergeant Nelson, Officer Perez, if you haven't been following us on Facebook, are participating in the Police Unity Tour this week, which is a, uh, three-hundred-mile bicycle ride to Washington DC to support law enforcement officers who've died in the line of duty as part of National Police Week. Uh, they officially arrived in Washington DC yesterday with thousands of riders from across the world. Um, we are still investigating the street takeover from last week. Our detectives have identified several participants in that event. Uh, we are working on the criminal investigation side and it appears several arrests warrants are pending for, uh, that case. I will keep you updated. Um, we also concluded the April distracted driving campaign in conjunction with, uh, the Connecticut DOT, where it was putting extra officers on the road in different areas to target drivers on their cell phones. This was a hundred percent reimbursable grant, so it did not cost the city any money. Uh, officers stopped over, uh, two-hundred-and-sixty vehicles in violation. Um, if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them. And, uh, Alderman Rivers, I drive up Franklin Street every day, so I was also glad to see that they finally paved it.
Just, just a, I just had a comment, chief, that, uh, some of the social media comments on the street takeover, a stronger you to urge to, to not do what some folks are recommending. Um, there were some, some pretty wild suggestions on how to combat that, so, um, but let's just not do what some are suggesting of.
Yeah, people, uh, people I've noticed online tend to voice things that they probably wouldn't do anyway. Or they
Agree.
give suggestions to my officers on things that the officers should do. Um, I will tell you, uh, unfortunately, that was the, um, the officer, the first responding officer. There were multiple officers responded, but the first responding officer had, uh, been off-field training for about a week. Um, so that's what he was confronted with. So, uh, having the least amount of experience in the department, I think he handled himself well. Um, and, uh, so did the rest of the officers. This is not limited to Ansonia. Uh, as a matter of fact, the, one of the targets of our investigation, uh, was involved in one, uh, in the southern part of the state, uh, this past weekend in which he crashed his vehicle. So, uh, there, there's, this is ongoing, um, and, uh, we'll make as many arrests as we can when it comes to this.
Uh, I don't envy you guys, so stay safe, you and your officers out there, chief.
Thank you very much, sir.
Any questions for the chief? Nope. Thank you, chief. We'll move on to Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Joseph Tobacco.
Good evening, Acting, uh, President Mamon and members of the Board of Alderman. First of all, I want to say thank you for the opportunity for me to provide you an update. But more importantly, I just want to express my sincere appreciation and gratitude for your continued support for our students, staff, and our schools. This past several weeks have been marked by AP testing at the high school and smarter balance testing at our elementary and middle schools. I do want to share that we recently inducted students to our National Business Honor Society. I was able to attend the CBIA, um, state event with a group of career pathway students. Our students were highlighted by the CBIA President, Chris Dipentima, multiple times. And Ansonia was proudly represented at this, of course, the STEM Challenge, and they fared very, very well. Uh, one of the highlights of our year is always at Villa Rosa in Waterbury, where our SCASs students, which is the South Central Area Superintendent Association Recognition Luncheon, is, takes place. We honor students from every one of our buildings. Our students are excelling and they're really making us proud. Um, I just did want to share that we are managing some significant transient enrollment. Um, we're welcoming students from across Connecticut, out of state, and from around the world. Right now, we have eleven nations represented, uh, in our school district in nine different states that students are coming in from. That demands some innovative planning and, and our attention. Uh, but most importantly, I just want to let you know, we're not doing this work alone. The partnership and the trust that you extend to us is critical to our success. Your ongoing investment in education makes a measurable difference in the lives of our children in Ansonia. For that, I thank you. And if you have any questions, I'm available to talk or meet.
Thank you, Dr. Joe. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Tobacco? Guess we're saving them all for the future, I guess. Right? It's like rollover minutes, I suppose. All right, so we're going to move on now to financial reports. Uh, we have the Finance Committee reports, which is usually a motion to pay all bills if deemed correct. Since I can't do that.
I'll make the motion to pay all bills if correct.
I have a motion by Tar.
Second.
Second by Rivers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Extensions? Motion carries. The boat recommendations, um, I did not see those come through. I don't know if anybody else did.
I thought boat canceled.
They canceled, right?
They canceled, so I don't think they were anytime.
Okay, perfect, that's why I didn't see them, great, just testing you guys, good, thanks. Um alright, the quest for refunds.
Tony, they did meet, but we didn't get any minutes. Oh, it was the same night as the public hearing, but they did hold the meeting.
Okay, alright, we'll have to hold that uh for next month. Alright, so the refund report um in the packet for the month of May was two thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Motion to pay if uh correct.
Second.
By Rivers, second by Tar, all in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Motion carries. Alright, and then just a blanket motion for all of the other monthly staff reports that were included in the. Packet.
I want to make a motion to accept all of the other um. All the other information that is always well done and is understandable, really nice, I mean, they do a really good job.
I agree with that, so we have a motion by Rivers. Second by, what was that, Janetti?
Yes.
Second by Janetti, all in favor? Closed, extensions. Motion carries. Thank you for that, and moving on to accidents and claims, we do have three listed here. We have claim number zero four two five one zero seven six. We have claim number zero four two five one zero seven seven. And claim number zero five two five one zero seven eight.
Motion to refer to counsel.
Second.
Second.
By Yaman, second by Rivers, all in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, John. Um appointments, we had one appointment. Aided May eighth, it's for the Nogatuck Valley Health District, it is a three-year reappointment. It is Thomas Clifford, the third Democrat, ten Southwestwood Road, Ansonia, term expiring, May twelfth, twenty twenty-eight.
Don't move.
Motion by Yaman. Second, miss that, second by Rivers, all in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Motion carries, thank you for that. Um we have no communications, no resignations, no resolutions, no ordinance. Uh we have, moving on to new business, um John or Sheila, the agreement between the City of Derby WPCA?
Okay, so have you had a chance to review that?
I have not, can you?
This is a summary. Someone mute them.
Yeah, I don't know where that's coming from, I don't want to mute everybody, but.
He gets Lewinsky's TV maybe, or background noise, there's radio.
I want to pull, want to pull this one up for us, pass this one for now, we'll come back to it at the end.
Okay, um the second one is the pending litigation regarding Segelka versus Ansonia.
These are, this particular matter should be an executive session matter, should not be on for right now, no. You could defer it to our next executive session, I'm not sure why it's there.
I'll make a motion to table it until uh next meeting for executive session.
Motion by Yaman, second by Tar, all in favor? Any opposed or extensions? Motion carried, we'll defer that to next session, next executive session. Alright, and then the third one, which was the late ad. Um everybody, I assume, received on the board, received the email from Jeff Bryce regarding the um request for funds. For two new soccer goals, did everybody see that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh the goals were pretty pathetic looking, um for the ones that they're still using, they were all rusted and. I don't think the soccer kids have tetanus shots required for, to play uh, you know, rec soccer, but.
We know what's left in the account.
I was just scrolling, looking for, to see if we had Rich or Kurt.
I didn't see Rich.
Oh, I see Rich on here, Rich is here. Rich, are you listening?
How much are the goals, uh Tony?
Five thousand for two.
Twenty-nine, twenty-four after tax.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Forty-nine, twenty-four, forty-nine, twenty-four, yeah.
Okay.
Do we have any uh? Does the goals are starting to deteriorate, they need new goals, attach pictures.
Um uh can I, can I make a motion um to get them if we have enough in there? Uh to uh cover it?
Can we have a discussion on this, though? First, find out what, what balance is in there, and second, before we spend money, don't we need to like think about having a budget in place?
Well, I assume this would still go in for this year.
Right.
I get it, but we don't know what's in there right now.
What we could do, and as a, as a compromise on this issue, uh realizing that they probably want to move quickly with this. Uh don't we have a special meeting um for the budget next Monday? We could ask that it be added to that special meeting agenda, and we could address it at that meeting. That way, we can get an update, we can get an update on the funds, and see if there's a balance there and, and address it at that point in time. Because I assume there's gonna be somebody from finance there at the budget meeting.
Second the motion.
I'll go look, what are we looking for, I'll go and find the balance in it if you'd like.
It's the, it's the sports, the, the sports line.
Oh, Rich is there, okay.
I had minor disagreement with my. I will go look and get back to you shortly.
Okay, thanks, Rich.
Yep.
There's a, there's a second piece on there. That, I, I don't, I don't know, we may have to table that piece of it regarding. Um renovating Pine Lot Park for soccer and some other activities. Um he believes he might be able to get some funding from, it looks like the Connecticut Soccer Association. And he's asking the Boys and Girls Club, you know, they could potentially, if they can get grants, you know, they could have some volunteers help.
There's Kurt Miller.
I think that conversation needs to take place for that second part, Tone, just my two cents, in the context of the referendum money, and the other parks and fields throughout the city. Um as well, so I think that's kind of holistic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agree.
Yeah, I don't, the, the only issue I would have, I don't, I don't know, I don't think he's asking for money, but more permission and, you know, how does he go about getting like permits to get that done, Joe, so. But yeah, we could.
That's what it sounded like to me too, but.
Does that have to go through like uh? Like Rec or any of the, like Jeff or anybody like that?
It would probably, it would probably go to John, and yeah, that would be my guess, John should look at that, Jeff should probably look at that as well, but. It's really, we're in charge of the fields, but you know, Pine Lot by, you know, is. If they, we can get anything from the Boys and Girls Club or any sort of contributions, obviously, that would be, that would be helpful. Because I know a few years back, they uh used to use that as a little league field. But they haven't in quite some time, so it does need quite a bit of renovation, or updates, I should say.
Yeah, so maybe that second part, we should refer to John to get some help, help us out with, see what we can do, if, if that's even feasible. Okay, so maybe we can split that into.
Yeah, and we may, we may want Tim to weigh in on that too, and just, you know, the, the, what the field looks like and stuff like that from Public Works.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Alright.
Just uh so you want um a motion to uh refer that part to uh John?
You already have two motions on the table.
Alright, what was, sorry, Trish, um can you recall me the first one?
Yes, Alderman Rivers moved to buy them if there's enough money in the account. There was no second to that motion.
I was drawing it.
Okay, and the second motion was, I believe Alderman Yaman moved to add it to the special meeting agenda for next Monday. And that had a second by Alderman Cassetti.
Okay, that, that one, we'll just wait for, to hear back from Rich really quick, if you want, Tone.
Okay.
And if, and if there is, if he can provide us that information, I can withdraw that, and we can just address it tonight. Um in terms of the second part of it, I would make the, I would make that um motion to refer the second part. In terms of anything to do with Pine Lot and the um, and the second part of that email. In terms of renovating, renovating the lot to city staff, um and the necessary parties within the city.
I'll second that.
Alright, so Trish, it's an email, we're gonna kind of, you know, split it here, the second part that deals with the request for Pine Lot. We have a, a motion to refer to city staff, you know, for recommendations on, you know, what Jeff is asking. Uh Yaman had the motion, Tar had the second.
I, I'll give you, and I'll give you the language, Trish, it's a motion to refer to city staff. The language is rehabilitate uh Pine Lot Park for soccer and activities. Um to staff, including um Tim Holman, um Jeff and John, specifically.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Alright, motion carries for that second part.
And I, balance, uh the count is budgeted at twenty thousand, we've spent ten, there's a balance of ten thousand dollars left.
And can I just, is that segregated?
Come through this year?
Yeah.
What did we pay this year, what sports have come to us, I know we did football and something else.
Looking now?
No, we didn't do um.
I thought we did football this year.
Was it?
Cheerleading, thought it was cheerleading.
Oh, that was cheerleading.
I thought we gave something to soccer previously, something to cheer.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, soccer usually.
I'm sorry, youth cheer was five thousand, Ansonia soccer, twenty-five hundred for the fall allocation. And twenty-five hundred for the spring allocation of twenty twenty-five.
So they've gotten five, and cheer got five.
Correct.
And they want another five.
I think we can table this for right now, we should.
They can't play without the uh, without the goals.
Yeah, the, the goals are deteriorating, so um Joe, you still have your?
Yeah, I mean, um, I don't know, do we want feedback, I mean, I guess that would be the point of discussion, do we, do we want or need feedback from um Jeff? Um as to other priorities and other sports, before we go and allocate fifty percent of the budget to a single sport. That would be the only concern that I had about voting on it tonight, maybe we could get that input, information and vote on it on Monday.
Yeah, we, we could, and I know everybody's responsible for putting together their requests and sending them through and things like that, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, and it's not a long wait, you know, it's, it's six days, so.
Yep. Okay, so Joe, you're.
Stand to add it to the special meeting agenda for Monday?
Yes, Trish.
Okay, thank you.
Was there a second on that?
Yes.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Mr. Marini, are you ready for item one?
That also should be passed over for our discussion in the executive session next time, at the next meeting, because there are some negotiation points that really can't be talked about in the open session.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table it and add it to the executive session at our next meeting in June.
Motion by Yaman. Second by four people, who, who was first?
Pick one.
Is that motion, uh second by Cassetti, all in favor? Opposed or abstentions? Motion carries. Alright, so that gets through new business, we have no old business. We have, the next item up is the review of bids for the Nolan Field Project, which was the responses to addendum. Five.
John.
Do you have any?
Right, so uh we put out an addendum, uh that was addendum five to the overall bid package. Bidders were asked to come back with a proposal that fell within the budget constraints that were articulated by the board, eight million. Uh addendum five also uh laid out priorities that were articulated by the Board of Aldermen. Relative to the Nolan Field Project. Um to remind the public, I'm sure this board needs no reminder, one of the reasons the project was scaled down in terms of financial uh size. Was to allow room for investment in other fields beyond Nolan Field. And to be conservative about that, making sure that there is enough in terms of funding. Uh from the bond issuance, to be able to adequately repair those fields and get them to be playable. And also to hold a certain amount in contingency, both for other fields and also possibly for Nolan. Depending how uh everything worked out. And so, uh we did have a reply to addendum five, that was from Field Turf. And tonight, I believe representatives from Field Turf are here to present to the board and to take any questions. Um are, and I do see them here, if they are here, and if you have them here, I could allow, uh. I could allow screen sharing at this time, if they would like to do that, or, you know, at their pleasure, and of course, at the board's pleasure.
They are on, Andrew and Chris, I believe are on.
Yeah, so um I, I was gonna say a, a few brief remarks and then hand um the, the presentation over to Chris. My name's Andrew Dyjack, I'm the Vice President uh for New England for Field Turf. Uh for, you know, nice to see everyone again, um and first and foremost, thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to present to you tonight, we really do appreciate it. Uh we understand that, you know, everyone here has worked extremely hard um a- along, along with us to, to get to this point. And we're, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have um about Field Turf in general. Um or specifically um to the uh proposal that we did uh for the addendum. Um we, we, we took the consideration of uh, of all, all the information that we've had uh over the past, I'd say, three or four months. Uh with particular attention to the concerns of, of this board um that were issued in the addendum. And uh we, 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 well, we, we know we came in under the budget, and, and we truly believe that we have given a scope. Um that the town of Ansonia, if chosen, and we build it correctly, which we will if chosen. Um we'll have a facility that they're very proud of, so um I, I want to now turn it over to Chris Hulk. He is our Director of Design and Construction, he's also a professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut. And he's gonna review uh the scope of what we submitted as a bid, um and then to answer any technical questions you may have. Um and again, I just really like to thank you very much for allowing us to present.
A- Andrew, can I, through you, Mr. President, can I just say, can you um speak to the? Time constraints or the, you know, the, the timing of this?
Yeah, uh Cr- Cr- Chris, uh uh I'm, I'm on the sales side, so I'll just say yes to everything, um that's half joking. Chris is the uh also our, our, our head of uh general construction, and he will definitely talk about the time, timeframe. Um what is needed, um and the um, you know, the, the quickness that we hope to have a ruling. An actual purchase order and then to be in construction, absolutely. And uh John, if you could, Sheila, could you share a screen or have a, uh make sure that Chris is able to share his screen?
Yeah, I think John uh allowed screen share, so yours should be awesome.
Great, thanks, Andrew, uh I'm Chris Hulk, I'm the Director of Design and Construction for Field Turf, um so I will share my screen here. Two. Um so, we'll just kind of give the, the overview of what we have included in the plan. I think everyone's pretty familiar with the plan that was put together, and then with some of the uh, the requests that came through through addendum five. Um so we did kind of a breakdown here of kind of the, the highlights of the project, but basically we'd be getting. You know, three new turf fields, um rebuilt grass field, new post tension, tennis courts, new post tension, basketball courts. Um new changing room, uh renovation of the fieldhouse for changing rooms. Include warranties, ball safety netting, um you know, all, all those kinds of things. Um we did make sure to include some of the benches and goals, soccer goals that would be needed for the, you know, the facility to operate appropriately. Um and this would be, you know, a full turnkey design build uh scenario that we've done. Um, and this would be, you know, a full turnkey design build uh, scenario that we've done many, many times in Connecticut. And throughout the region, uh, our region being New England. Uh, and then at the end of the pa- end of the uh, the project, we would work through the as-built warranty product data so that you guys would have a nice closeout package that would have all the information that you would need to uh, uh, run the facility going forward in the future. Um. So I'll screen over to kind of the overall layout. Um. So on here, we have the, the, the baseball with the football field overlay, um, maintaining the, you know, the football field, being able to utilize the bleachers with uh, the new ramp and ADA seating and some of the repairs that we would be dealing to the uh, to the new, to the existing bleacher system. Um. We also included um, lines for up to four sports on all the fields. Uh, right now, we're showing on the main field there, baseball, football, soccer, um, on the middle field, uh, we could have soccer, football. Um, if in the future there is an expansion for, say, field hockey and lacrosse, um, you know, those are also sized to be able to fit into those fields. Um, and then one thing that you guys will have that will be fairly unique to Connecticut is um, a softball field that'll be synthetic turf that's also sized for Little League. Um, so you really would have a lit, Little League field, which um, I don't know if anyone else in Connecticut has a synthetic turf lit, Little League field. Um, for the, the grass baseball field, um, that would have irrigation, uh, rebuilt infield, um, you know, backstop. Um, you know, all those kinds of things, uh, fencing, we have a little bit of a larger fence out in left field to be able to maintain that, that playability size. Um, in the middle of the facility, we have the new bathroom with um, some changing room in it. Uh, we also have the renovation to the existing um, field house that will be, you know, a lot of the stuff kind of removed, removed to be able to make it a um, more or less a changing room and get rid of some of the stuff that's kind of not used, they're dilapidated and, and those kinds of things. Uh, in the middle on the bottom, we have the three new post tension uh, concrete courts. Um, those come with a fifty-year, five-zero structural warranty. Um, same thing, we're gonna rebuild the basketball court with post tension concrete. Um. Went out and revisited and there are some significant cracks in there, so they really should kind of get rebuilt. And then one of the things that you'll kind of see on here, kind of between the tennis courts and sort of where we have the new striped parking spaces, is we are going to rebuild the slope that's between the courts and that uh, upper area. Um, you know, right now, what, what happens is you drive in and, you know, you kind of see an overgrown pathway and it's very hard to maintain, so we want to make sure that when you drive in and arrive to the site, um, that you really have a nice sense of arrival. It's easy to maintain and something that, you know, people will be really happy and excited to, uh, to show up to. Um, as far as the, the timeline for construction, um, obviously we've lost some time here on the front end. Um, so what that would mean is that, you know, we are going to prioritize the building of, we'll call it the first field with the baseball football field, make sure that that is uh, done and playable and usable for uh, the middle of August when uh, football's gonna need it for. Um, with that being done, we're gonna have to, you know, work with the town to develop, um, where we put up, you know, construction fencing, where we route people for access and those kinds of things, knowing that other areas will still be under construction, um, for the other fields, uh, kind of throughout August and throughout the fall. But make sure that the uh, you know, the, the football field, uh, which also could be used for soccer, would be, will be playable for the middle of August there, so I think that was kind of one of the main deadlines of the the RFP, um, so we can deliver on that with, without a problem. Um, to date, uh, we've drafted a, a sales agreement, um, we sent over to the town for review, um, so we are in a position to be able to move forward pretty quickly. Um, as soon as we, you know, hear back from you guys on a, on a vote or, you know, a signed sales agreement or something like that. Um, we, you know, we've worked with you guys and, and the school and town for a while to really come up with, you know, what we thought would be a plan that Ansonia is gonna be able to use for a long period of time, so that you can have multiple things going out at once. Um, improve the parking, improve the ADA access, um, and really try to make it so that, you know, this is the focal point of where people are coming to play sports. So even if you have a baseball game and a soccer game go, or a baseball game and um, uh, softball game going on, you know, you can also have middle school baseball out there. If you needed to have rec soccer going on at the same time, you could do all of those things and really make it so that, you know, your only real challenge is gonna be um, you know, organizing who gets to use the fields when, um. You talked a little bit earlier in the meeting about revenue generators. And, you know, this is something that could really be a great revenue generator for the town too, to have a facility like this. Um. So I mean, that's, that's kind of, kind of what we've put into this one. Um. You know, happy to answer any questions you guys might have, or Andrew, if I missed anything, um, you know, on, on the specific side, but you know, we're excited to have this opportunity and, and help Ansonia move forward in the future.
Yeah, you, you only, great job, Chris. Thank you. Um, and again, Andrew with Field Turf. Uh, the, you know, we, we can, if, if a vote is approved, um, you know, we can begin the process with either a purchase order through the town with a uh, sales agreement uh, to follow, um, with some payment terms, et cetera. Um, and that, that would, you know, begin our seminal process and then we could, you know, begin to mobilize. Um, uh, Chris will do a great job, uh, along with our other construction management team on ensuring we're meeting deadlines. Uh, but one of the things that we want to impress a, a, upon this group is that, um, you know, we feel like a decision, um, kind of uh, needs to be made pretty soon, uh, for us to be able to meet, meet those timelines, so. Um, I think Chris had all the construction pieces of it. Uh, just wanted to touch on that one logistical piece and again, happy to answer any questions that anybody may have, and thank you very much.
Chris and Andrew, I do have one. So I, I know you touched upon the, the changing room, but specifically, you know, one of the challenges that we've had for you know, girls slash young women that we have in town, you know, having dedicated either locker or, you know, changing space. Do, you, you mentioned changing space. Does that include it for, you know, dedicated for our, for, for girls and for, you know, young women that are playing?
Yep, so the um, the renovations to the uh, existing field house will basically break it apart, so there'll be kind of a men's side and a women's side. Um, and additionally, the new building that we'll be putting in, which will have uh, uh, four bathrooms on either side, will have basically a a, a home team and a way team, so it could either be used, men's and women's, um, women's home and away or, or whatever, but wanting to make sure that both sets of fields really have the ability to have somebody go and do use bathrooms and do changing at, at either location. So there's, there'll be.
And those, those bathrooms are dedicated to the teams or is that kind of like a public space?
Um, so there'll be kind of I guess that's kind of a logistical thing that we'll have to, have to work through as far as how we want to develop it. Um, I think we can, you know, add another door and make it so public has some space there. Or, you know, when people are arriving, can make it so that it's specific for one of the teams. Um, we could have an internal door. Um, but yeah, we, we could definitely make it so that we're able to accommodate whatever the needs are. Um, you know, with a couple of, yeah, strategic doors and walls and locations to be able to make it so, so both can be serviced.
Okay. And then maybe a combination question for, for Chris and for John Marini. The other fields, a- a- again, I know this is, this is great and stuff like that, but there's, you know, other sports that are played at some of the other locations. Uh, uh, I assume the remaining funds would be utilized to um, make the improvements on the other fields that are there?
Yes, absolutely.
And so what would happen is we would envision, number one, getting quickly the feedback from our engineers um, to figure out the proper uh, course of action to remedy those other fields, right? Um, Colony, Nature Center, and any other fields, possibly Nelligan, and then uh, go out to bid on those projects as a unit.
Okay.
You know, it's important to get engineering. Uh, there was some discussion, you know, some confusing discussion about Colony, for example, early on. Uh, there was some water uh, recently, and the question was, wow, you know, did the drainage at Colony actually work, right? Did that take? Uh, what's going on? And we found out it was really simply a matter of the maintenance of the silk uh, in the drains being cleared so that the drains could be operational. So we, we really need to make sure the fields are looked at by a professional to determine what next steps need to be taken so we could address it in the most responsible way, uh, cost-wise for the taxpayers and get the fields playable for the teams and the kids.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, from, from an amateur perspective, I'm no, uh, no engineer, but um, you know, as someone who's at Colony each weekend for, for sports, sporting events, since the silk screens have been removed, you know, that, that field has become a lot more, um, playable, usable, it, it, it actually, it's not, you know, you don't have, you know, children drowning in puddles and things like that in the middle of the field, but it's uh, it's gotten much better. It's, it's definitely improved. The lower field, you know, we gotta talk about that another time. Um, just for some potential uses there, but to bring that online, but uh, you know, potentially with some of the um, topsoil from Nolan, we might be able to fix some of the issues there, John, but we could, again, not an engineer. I'm an accounting guy. I, I know numbers. I don't know, like, uh, you know, dirt or soil or slopes or any of that stuff, but we could talk about that. Um, does anybody from the board have any questions? Any comments?
I have one.
Go ahead, Joe.
Does this include uh, under, underground utilities?
Um, so uh, drainage and new power going to each of the light bulbs and the new scoreboard will be underground. Um, the existing wiring that serves as a site currently will stay above ground and we put an alternate in. Um, you know, if there's no contingency that's used through the project, that, that could be added in, um, at a, at the end of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Cassetti?
Yes. Through you, Tony, to uh, John. Uh, what do you need from us tonight to get this uh, project and this uh, this event going? John? Marini?
So, uh, yeah, number one, functionally, right, is to accept the bid. Um, so Board of Alderman have the power under the charter to accept uh, or reject any and all bids submitted for the project. So uh, this, the, the Board of Alderman, we need a vote, formal vote, to accept Field Turf's bid as the prevailing bid. Um, and then number two, separate motion to authorize the city, authorize the mayor to enter into any and all contracts necessary and furtherance of the agreement on behalf of the city.
Okay, if I may, so, hold on, so in terms of an action, you know, for folks that were, especially board members that were at the budget meeting, at the public hearing, you know, the city is a, at this point, having trouble getting a budget passed. You know, we are nine out of ten votes for the voters who showed up to vote for the referendum as a no for the city budget. City budget is coming down to a zero increase uh, year over year. The Board of Ed is also having an issue getting their budget through. So I'm just gonna ask folks to be considerate of that if we're gonna go and strap on eight million dollars of debt to the city before we go ahead and do this, so. Chicago, you were gonna say?
Yes, I was gonna say, um, uh, John, is this the only, um,
Bid.
Uh, bid that we got uh, to the um, addendum on, on this?
Yes, it is, Alderman Rivers. It's the only submission in response to addendum five.
Okay.
Well, we can make a motion, I'll make a motion to accept the bid.
Okay, now I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the bid by Tar, second by Rivers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or abstentions? Okay, motion carries to accept the bid.
And I think again, same thing, we need to consider our budget concerns before we go out and spend eight million dollars, so do we wanna move this to Monday's discussion?
So I can't.
And see where we fall on Monday before we vote.
I can't say to the board, for, for purposes of, of information, I can say that this project will not have a budgetary impact until fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. Specifically, that fiscal impact would be the first year that a debt payment comes due. Uh, Kurt Miller is on and could certainly elaborate more on that if needed. He could take questions, but there would be no fiscal impact uh, in the budget year that we're working on or the following budget year. It would be twenty twenty-seven. Kurt, uh, could you add anything to that? Because obviously cost and, you know, is, is a big part of the Alderman's consideration here. I want to make sure.
What happens in twenty twenty-seven?
And you're not.
Have all the facts. It's simply the schedule of, of debt payments, what they come to.
Yeah, so um, through, through Mr. President, the um, the debt payment schedule would depend on when the money was actually taken. Um, I met with the underwriters today. We had a conversation um, about kind of building out the transaction itself, so uh, depending on how we structure it, will depend on what the payments uh, will be. I won't have that uh, information for probably another two or three weeks. Um, but to, to John's point, um, at the earliest, there, the first principal and interest payment or just interest payment, depending on how it's done, will be in fiscal twenty-seven, which will be the next fiscal year, not the one that's currently being voted on at referendum, but the one following.
What's that number?
For some reason, we, I'm sorry?
Do you know what that year one number is?
Uh, we, we will not know that until the final transaction is built. We're gonna go out, um, we're gonna go out directly to a bunch of different lenders, um, and they're essentially gonna bid on it, so it's gonna depend on the financing package that they build. Uh, we'll determine that.
Is there a big year one payment on that? Is that like a hypothetically, like a million dollar payment, or is that a, like you're saying, it's just interest, so to speak, but can you, can you?
Y- y- you, you can't look at just the, uh, the field. Um, because again, there's so many other projects, and when you're building out the debt, it's gonna, the debt is based on the life expectancy of the underlying asset. Um, so, you know, once you get into the true principal and interest payments, yeah, you're gonna be looking at a sizable amount a year, um, north of a million dollars. But in these first couple of years, uh, it just depends again how the deal is structured. So if we did interest-only payments or, um, if we didn't take, you know, while we have access to money, if we didn't take it off, it wasn't needed, uh, we could structure in the payments, so it could be anywhere from, you know, a hundred or two, up to uh, up to a million within the first two years.
Depends on which other projects go forward, correct? For example, you have a larger project with the middle school, so the, and, and when you were talking about it being all-inclusive, you're talking about the debt from a project like that as well, correct?
Um, uh, yeah, the bill school is gonna depend on, um, it's gonna depend on what's ultimately borrowed. Uh, because again, with a hundred million dollars, we need to take out a bond anticipation note for that and carry that during the construction until we're closed out by, um, by the state of Connecticut, but you know, we're looking in the high night, high eighties uh, at this point for reimbursement, so we'll probably end up paying ten million dollars, let's say, give or take for a school. Which would be uh, fantastic, but at that case, you're looking at about forty million, um, in total borrowing. So, but again, the school you could stretch out over thirty years. So that will minimize those, those payments, but again, turf field, you know, it's gonna be up to what bond council says. They're probably gonna make us pay it back within ten. Uh, cause that's, you know, realistic life expectancy. If we take care of it, you know, fifteen maybe. Um, you know, there's trucks, there's, uh, you know, an animal shelter, uh, there's a lot of moving parts uh, in this bond issue, so.
Um, in terms of paying bond payments, this is something that would be eligible or more appropriate to pay with one-time revenue, correct? It's not something that's plugged necessarily into the operating budget. For example, if there is a surplus or if there's an opportunity to make a one-time payment, it can be done versus what we're trying to get away from putting a fund balance or one-time revenue towards operating costs that continue year to year.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. You can always use one-time revenue sources to make uh, specific capital payments, absolutely. But again, that would be for the whole uh, capital item. We wouldn't, we necessarily want to do that just for principal and interest payments as an example, unless, um, depending how we structure it out, if we're able to go to, you know, a declining uh, principal and interest payment model, which is what the city currently has, then you may want to use one-time revenue for that one year to address the spike, understanding that you'll have a decline. Understanding that you'll have a declining model every year going forward. So. Other thing to keep in mind too, and I I couldn't answer this question now, cause I can't. I can't anticipate where mil- where interest rates are going to be. Um, you know, we could be looking at refinancing all of our debt in the next couple of years, depending on what interest rates do. Now, if interest rates were to come down and it's a favorable interest rate market. Uh, it's one of the things that the underwriters do is they go through and they analyze each of our issues. To see if there's any opportunity to uh to refinance, which obviously would be extremely beneficial to uh to the city.
That would be a mid to long term event based on the condition of rates and where they're headed or. Did I say not headed?
Yeah, right.
Right. Okay.
I mean, I guess I I I would just add in, you know, um. The voters approve this, right, for these projects?
Yeah.
So I think that's important to take note of and 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 secondarily, while recognizing the fact that, you know, we're kind of. Um, in uncharted waters for Ansonia, having gone through the this referendum process twice now and and kind of seen voters say would, you know, say no twice. Um, I just think it's important that this is, this is one of the things that our city needs. This isn't really a a want per se. This is, these fields need to be updated. We need to, this has been a discussion since I've been on the board. Um, so I think it's important that we move forward um and try to get this done as soon as possible.
Make it a motion.
I will. I will make that motion to authorize the mayor to sign and uh execute any and all contracts necessary. On behalf of the city.
I'll second it.
Motion by Yalman, second by Janetti. Point of discussion, and again, I've I've kind of said my piece. I'm just gonna reiterate it. You know, based on the current state of the budget and what residents are saying, um. You know, I think it's a bit tone deaf for us to to move forward with that for now, but. Again, it's up to the the board to make that decision, so. Any other discussions?
We can't. I'm sorry, sorry to you, Tony. Can we defer the decision or it has to be tonight? Like, I think it's kind of irresponsible to just. I don't know, until we have some clear understanding of where we're going Monday. Or, I mean, if you guys want to vote on it, that's fine, but. I just think we need to have a little clarity as to where we're gonna land. Because. I don't know. I mean. We heard what the voters said. I understand. Go ahead, Joe. Sorry.
I was just gonna say, Bob, and sort and sort of in response to that is that what I'm what I'm understanding from what Kurt said and what John said, this is not a budget impact. For next fiscal year, as soon it would the 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 newest impact that this is gonna have uh is in twenty twenty seven, which means that this discussion is gonna be something that is gonna be taken up a year. From now or two years from now. I understand what Tony's saying about being tone deaf and and hearing that. And what I'm what I'm understanding based on what was said at this meeting is that we're going to have. Um, basically zero percent. So we're gonna be using this, you working off the same budget. As last year um on the city side. Um, and then it's gonna be a matter of what, you know, what gets recommended from the BOE. Um, and the schools as what goes back out to referendum. So I think, you know, having this previously been voted. By the voters overwhelmingly is my recollection, um, that this is something that they want. They want these fields renovated. They want this work to be done. I understand the. Exactly what Tony's saying. I understand exactly what Kurt's saying, but and not to sort of. Use the analogy of punting the football, but I think this is just, this is a need for our city. You know, um, and it's something that is gonna have to be dealt with in budgets to come, but I don't necessarily think it impacts this budget.
Diddle.
I get it. Thank you. I just, I don't know.
I gotta agree with Joe. I um.
Yeah.
But I I don't know. I I I've taken rides by those fields um numerous times. And. I'm sorry, but. You look at other other. And you go you go see what they have for the kids and um you you almost get jealous because. Our kids got to play on what what is there now. And I don't think it's fair to our youth or even adults to to see what's up there and what they have to play with. Like I say, uh, my my son coaches uh high school football and I go to a lot of different fields. And you come back to Nolan Field and you look at what we have and you say, oh, my gosh, our kids deserve better. And I agree with Joe, um, it's not gonna and uh affect this budget. Um, so. I don't see how we can't. I mean, if we don't do it now, what are we gonna wait? Not there until twenty twenty seven to do this when the voters already voted to do it? Um, I think the time is now. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Is there any other? Discussion commentary?
Yeah, we've got championship teams. And they should be playing on championship fields. So I'm in favor of this motion.
Thanks, Joe. Any others? All right, we have a motion by Yalman. We have a second by Janetti. Trish, you have the the language. To approve the bid. Mayor to approve the bid. Or sign the sign the bid?
Move to authorize the mayor to enter into any and all contracts necessary in furtherance of the agreement.
That's much more eloquent than I said it, so.
Yes.
All right, uh, all in favor?
Hi. Hi. Hi.
Any opposed? I'm going to oppose that.
I'm I'm abstaining.
And then one abstention. Motion carries.
Question. Is um Steve iPhone, is that Alderman Adamowski there? I saw that.
Oh, no.
Steve's iPhone. I just didn't know if he was here. I was gonna count him as present. Okay.
Steve, is that you? Steve Adamowski?
I don't think that's him.
Okay.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry. That's Steve Bergen. Steve Bergen.
Hello, Steve Bergen.
Yep, sorry, Steve Bergen. I'm on my phone, not on my computer. I apologize.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so that motion carried. Um. John, the mayor, you know. Good luck. Do us proud with that. Members of Field Turf, thank you very much for that as well. Um.
Next. Thank you, guys.
Next. Yep. We have executive session next.
Motion on to executive session. Tony.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Tar.
What do you want?
Favor?
Look over Kurt.
Hi.
Myself.
Recording and send us away, John.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Second. Wait, what time is it? Nine fifty one?
Second.
Nine fifty one. Thank you.
Motion by Rivers, second by Tar. All in favor?
Hi.
Um. Opposed or abstained? No, motion carries. All right. So we had an executive session. We had. Five items on the agenda. The first one had two parts. We'll take the first one. So light negotiation regarding one A seventy seven Grove Street.
Motion to take no action.
Second.
Motion by Yalman, second by Rivers. All in favor?
Uh.
Opposed or abstentions? Motion carries. Blight negotiation number one B on the agenda, one sixteen A Jewett Street.
Uh, make a motion to extend the offer as discussed in executive session.
Second. Second.
Motion by Yalman, second by Cassetti. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Carries. Uh, item two, blight lien regarding Ansonia versus Capasso.
I'll make a motion to extend the offer as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion by Yalman. Who is that? Is that Cassette? Uh?
Janetti.
Janetti. Sorry, second by Janetti. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, um. Item number. Oh, motion carry, sorry. Item number three. Contract negotiation regarding the chief of police.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the contract efforts reviewed and approved by council of the changes as was discussed.
We have to review it and approved.
After reviewed and approved by council, the changes that we just uh that were discussed in executive session.
Thank you.
Motion by Yalman. I missed that second. I'm sorry.
Uh, that was me, Tony.
Second by Rivers. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed or abstentions? Motion carries. Item number four. Contract negotiation regarding Shelton Development Corp, Economic Development Service.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize court counsel to draft an agreement for the Board of Alderman's review and presentation to the board on Monday, uh, next Monday, five nineteen.
Okay.
Motion by Yalman, second by not. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed or abstentions?
Come here.
Motion carries. Number five, potential purchase of property settlement of claim regarding Ansonia Orchard.
Motion to take no action.
Second.
Motion by Yalman, second by Rivers. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, uh, before we adjourn, we're we're gonna, we have one more item to cover. So. It's regarding the budget and we're gonna need to add just quickly here. I need a motion to add an agenda item to discuss and take possible action to revise the city budget for the. Budget city budget meeting on Monday, this Monday.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by, was that Yalman?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second by Yalman. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed or abstentions? Okay, agenda item added. Uh, what would you guys like to do with it?
So if there's no discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city staff to take the budget down to a zero percent increase by reducing the line items as discussed at the five five Alderman meeting.
Motion by Tar.
I'm sorry. The zero in zero percent increase. Take the to take the budget down to a zero percent increase.
Hi.
By reducing the line items that were discussed. At the five five Alderman meeting. Thank you.
Second.
A motion by Tar and a second by not. All in favor?
Wait, John, Tony, one point, one just one piece of discussion. Just want to make sure that it's clear that, uh, in addition to that, that it's gonna be published for pu- for public review. Um, prior to Monday.
Will you amend?
I can I can amend that to the motion and to. Publish prior to Monday's Alderman meeting, public, public meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Tar, second by not. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed or abstentions? All right. One final piece of business.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, no, one more. One quick note. Please.
Go ahead, Trish.
Okay. This recorder. I'm going to be out of the country next week.
Okay.
You need somebody to record that meeting for me with this.
Okay.
Who wants?
Well, I assume either if you get it to John, it will get to the meeting somehow. I don't know if.
Yeah.
We could do that, arrange that.
Okay. I just want to be aware of it.
Okay.
Okay.
And and I believe we're gonna, I I think it's a Zoom, so, you know, we'll record it. You could have it that way too, but if you get to record it to John, we'll run it up.
Hey, I didn't know it was Zoom. I thought it was gonna be in person. If it were in person, we would use this. Zoom.
Okay.
And I don't need it. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion to adjourn by Rivers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Tar, uh, ladies and gent- lady and gentlemen, thank you very much. Trish, thank you very much. Everybody enjoy your evening.
Good night, Tony.
Night, everybody.
All right.
Good job, Tony.
Thank you, sir.
Well done, Tom.
Good job.
Yep, all right.